For Grimes County, today is Wednesday, April 10, 2019. It is 9:00 a.m. and we are located in the Grimes County Annex Building, 114 West Buffington Avenue, Anderson, Texas. At this time, we will call to order and have the invocation by Pastor Thompson, Charles Thompson, I'm sorry. Let us stand, please.
Let us pray. Most gracious Father, we come now asking your blessings upon this court. We realize, Father, you are the one that's over the greatest court. And, Father, as your wisdom to be passed down upon this court, upon all the commissioners, judge, every one that is here. Father, we pray, Father, that we will resolve every problem or solution that there is because we honor you and to know that you are with your people. Thank you for this day. In Jesus' name we pray.
Jesus' name.
Amen.
Let us have a pledge allegiance to the United States' flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and universal.
Our county judge is out this morning attending our leadership conference. Let's keep him in our prayers. At this time, we're up to public comments. We look forward to hearing from the citizens of Grimes County and others. If you have any public thoughts you'd like to share at this time, we ask that you come to the podium, introduce yourself, and please limit your comments to about two minutes. Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
I have one announcement. Go ahead.
I'm Grimes County, Texas Assistant Collector Mary Ann Waters. Just to let you guys know that starting Monday, 15th, we'll be doing bulletin board registrations and titles in our office.
Great.
All right, Mary.
I'm Gail Sal, and we had our town cleaned up Saturday, March 30th, and Al Peeler gave us, or provided us with some community service workers, seven or eight, and we got a lot of trees cleared off and roadways cleared out, and we thank y'all very much for allowing that to happen.
Thank you, Al.
I do have an announcement.
Permission.
Saturday, the 13th, the Grimes County Area Go Texas Committee is having our annual crawfish boil. You can get your tickets at the door. We've sold all the tables that we have, and the tickets are $50 at the door. All you can eat crawfish, sausage, and corned potatoes.
Which hour is that?
Six o'clock.
Six?
Six o'clock.
We'll be there 5:30, but should start serving at six.
All right. So we'll move on right now to consent agenda items three and four. And that's on, yeah, three and four. Are there any questions?
There's no discussion. I'm making a motion to approve consent agenda item three and four.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve consent agenda items three and four by Commissioner Cox, accepted by Commissioner Mallon. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We're now up to item number five, Sexual Assault Resource Center Education and Outreach Specialist Consuelo Martinez. Is she here today? If not, it's item number five, and I'll present them. This is a proclamation to take action. The item is "Consider and Take Action to Approve the Proclamation Designating the Month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Grimes County and Authorize the County Judge's Signature." Proclamation. Whereas the effects of sexual assault go far beyond the physical, and victims often develop a number of psychological conditions such as post-traumatic stress disorder and depression affecting families, friends, and Texas community, spurring fear, anger, and a sense of vulnerability. And whereas few survivors of sexual violence seek help immediately after victimization due to shame or fear of not being believed, to end sexual assault, we must alleviate these fears and begin by believing. And whereas the members of a caring society, members of communities across the state of Texas must unite to remove the stigma of rape, and the Brazos Valley community must continue the dialogue started by the Sexual Assault Resource Center in their places of work, schools, and homes. Whereas each year, the month of April provides an opportunity for the Sexual Assault Resource Center and rape crisis centers across the state of Texas to renew their commitments to serve their communities. Educational efforts also intensify, which ensure that Texans are aware of the sexual assault services available in their area. Now therefore, we as the Commissioners' Court of Grimes County do hereby designate April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness and Provision Prevention Month in Grimes County. We appreciate the Sexual Assault Resource Center and all of their efforts and all of our county partners that work with them. So at this time, do I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
I move that we approve the proclamation designating the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Grimes County and authorize the county judge to sit in the room.
I second.
I think it has a place for all those.
Yes, it does. Okay, yeah. And I second it. Thank you, Commissioner Mallon. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, we're up to item number six, "Consider and Take Action to Approve the Child Welfare Board's Request to Remove Michelle Sanders from the Board and Approve Adding Patty Sexton as Her Replacement." And we have this morning, members of the board, Mayor Gail Sal and Ms. Susan Boudreaux.
Thank you, Commissioner Ford. I first want to start off by saying thank you all for all that you've provided for us because we would not be in existence without you all. We have a handout, and I don't know if all of y'all have looked at it, but it basically, the first page of it is something that I put together, the second page, Mayor Sal's going to talk about, looking at April as Child, National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I would just like to say that in Grimes County, we're a small county, we're a poor county, and we have an increasing number of children who have been abused. I first became aware of child abuse in Grimes County years ago. I was in education here for 42 years, and the first cases that I had was a child who was about three years old. She had, was a beautiful child, absolutely beautiful. She'd been born completely normal. She, at this time at three years of age, was blind, she was deaf, she couldn't walk, and she would never walk, and she couldn't talk. She'd been abused by her father. That was my first indication of some of the horrors of child abuse. That's a horrible story. Then there's another story of a child that, in a different school within Grimes County, that came to school one day with a cockroach in his ear. The parents were contacted, did nothing about it. The nurse contacted CPS, CPS came in and took the child. The child's, the cockroach was removed from the child's ear, and the child's hearing was not lost forever. But in the meantime, the teacher that had reported the child fell in love with the child, took the child home, and now is the adopted mother of that particular child. So you see, there's the horror, the horror sides and the good sides. But what we do with the Child Welfare Board is to try to bring awareness of abuse in this, in our county and across the nation. There are many different kinds of abuse, and it's all laid out in the, in the handout, if you want to read about it. But what we want to, want to do is make you all aware that we are here to provide services for the children whenever possible, and that we do appreciate the support, because all of our support comes from you all. So there are 47 cases right now of children who are in care in Grimes County, and that's a lot. We used to have a few, and now we have a continuing to grow. Mayor Sal's going to talk to you a little bit about what we, how we spend the money that you allow us.
Okay, and what is it right here? We do have a handout, if you would like to pick one up and just to read all about what we have here in Grimes County. I've actually been on the, I came on the board in the late 1990s, but I've been the treasurer since 2001. And when I came on board, there were like six to 10, it varied yearly, but six to 10 of Grimes County kids in, in care. Well, as the time went, and so basically, back then, we provided only clothing several times a year to the foster parents for, for them, because they didn't get really any other money from anybody else. Well, when, and we would give like, May is Foster Parent Month, and we would give money just for the parents to go out and have a night out, you know, or something like that. But we would only provide clothing at that time. Well, as the years went by, in 2003, we were up to 14 kids that were Grimes County kids in care. And most of our kids are placed out of the county because we don't have that many foster parents in the county at all. And so, but now we have some kids placed inside our county because a relative is taken, has taken control of them or something like that. But, but most of our kids are from, in surrounding counties. In 2005, we were up to 17 kids. In 2006, we were up to 30 kids. So you can see as the years go how child abuse is just growing and growing and growing. And in 2008, we were up to 43 kids. And so, at that time, we were getting to where, okay, our money is really getting depleted here because we, we get money from Commissioners' Court every year as an allotment from the board. So then we started only giving emergency clothing, like when they would go out and pick up kids in the middle of the night, well, we would, you know, provide clothing for that family that just got this kid with just what it had on, you know. And so, that kind of made me sad because we were running low on money. Well, as the time went, Commissioners' Court has been more generous to give us a little more each month, every year to, to provide for that. And so, at Christmas, so now presently, we give a clothing allotment in May for summer clothing, we're fixing to do that, and then in August, we give a school clothing allotment. And then at Christmas, we give Visa cards, and, and on, and those two allotments in May and August is used basically only for clothing for those kids. At Christmas, you can take that money and buy Christmas gifts for that kid or whatever, you know, but, and so right now, where we get our money from, like this last allotment we got from the county was 12,000. And then we did get the jury donations, and the last jury donation we got came to $2,590. So that gave us, you know, basically 14, almost 15,000 to work with for a year. And over, so over the years, usually, like I said, it used to be just clothing, but as we got more and more kids, we got more and more situations, and so people started, so the work case workers started asking us, hey, you know, can you do this, can you do that? And so, within a limit, we do, you know, help as much as we can. So where we spend our money mainly is clothing for, for the children. We give them Christmas cards with Visa cards in it to spend. We do ads in, like this month, this child abuse prevention, so we've done some, we did, knacked it a story for Susan in the paper last week, I think it was. Anyway, different things we do, and then, but we send the, our CPS workers to, in January, to a, a conference each year. We, we pay for choir seats, playpens, bunk beds and mattresses, baby monitors, diapers. We did have, what was the name of that? The Rainbow Room or something?
Rainbow Room.
That they can get some of that stuff from, but not what they need. We've paid for emergency prescriptions, doctor's visits, daycare at one point for, and then we did spend $800 on a special needs helmet that a kid had to have for his, a certain illness that he had. At one time, we spent, we bought 10 of those Lifelike baby dolls at $338 each and gave them to the school district to use in their family life classes. We've paid for social security cards, birth certificates, medical records, fingerprinting, driver's education for those that got old enough to drive but didn't have the money to pay for driver's education. And, you know, stuff like that, we feel it's necessary to, because if this kid doesn't have a driver's license, then he can't go get a job and better himself. So we feel like that's important. We've had, we've paid for sexual abuse exams, graduation rings and pictures, caps and gowns, prom tickets. We did a roach treatment on a home. We did electric heaters, electricians, and the lumber intend to repair a roof where kids were staying. We've given donations to Scotty's House, recent, and Shattered Dreams, and recently we gave Brenda Williams some money. We donated some money to her to help with the crime victims assistance program there. We did, we recently got a GPS tracker for a child that has autism, and the parent was having a really hard time, so we paid for a tracker for that one month and to help her out. And then recently, we paid for two months of car insurance for a young man that had a job, but he didn't have a way to get there, so he had a car, someone gave him a car, and, but he didn't have car insurance. So we got him two months of car insurance, and hopefully after that, he would have enough money then to, you know, pay for his car insurance. So we do a lot. And our CPS workers out of Bryan-Broom tell us that, our caseworkers tell us that our board is really one of the best out of their region, you know, that's what we do for our, our kids in care. And so, on the, presently serving on the board now is our leader, Susan Boudreaux, me, and a familiar face over here, Bob Dillstein. And Bob came on board after a, a few, couple of years ago when I gave a report here. He signed up, so thank you, Bob. And Mary Nichols is on our board, and Sharon Allen, Lester Underwood, Ruby Carr, Talita Coleman, and Sherri Faust. And our, our Commissioners' Court representative is David Wabianski.
He's very loyal.
Yeah, he comes to, he's very good to come. And so, because of personal matters and different matters, Michelle Sanders is leaving the board, and then we, we would like the board to add Patty Sexton, which is here, and she's going to, would like to come on board. Patty had someone special in this. Do you want to tell her who you want, tell her who you want?
Oh, well, my son is here, John Christopher.
He'd be cute.
They call him John Christopher.
Keep going.
And he's wonderful.
He is.
Yeah, that's what we've been here. Actually, I'm a Grimes County native. I was born here, grew up here. In 1985, moved to Conroe and was there for 30 years, just moved back about a year, well, August, it'll be a year ago. While I was in Montgomery County, I worked for CASA, and, which is, if you don't know, it's, it's actually, they, we, I still say we, they take cases of children in foster care, and actually, they're guardian in light of while they go through the court system. So along with Susan, I've seen some really horrendous things. I've seen some miracles, I've seen some happy endings, but evidently, I'm just flabbergasted by everything the Child Welfare Board does here because they don't do that in Grimes, in Montgomery County. So I'm just thrilled to be a part of this, and, and thank you for the opportunity.
So as you can see, she's going to be an asset to our court. We appreciate her, if you vote her in for us.
Thank you all.
I would like to add to that. When I came on as liaison to the board, we were having trouble getting a quorum at our meetings, and we canceled several meetings because we didn't have enough people there. And I applaud Susan and Gail and the people who are on the board now, because we are up to, what, 14, 15 members now? And the board has really come forward, and people have really come forward to help us on, on the board.
We appreciate it. Would you like to make that motion?
I move that we approve Child Welfare Board's request to remove Michelle Sanders from the board and approve Patty Sexton as her replacement.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve removing Michelle Sanders from the Child Welfare Board and approving Ms. Patty Sexton as her replacement. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Are you Ms. Martinez? Excuse me? Are you with the sexual?
I'm, I'm Ms. Carol, the executive director, the new executive director, and she should be here any minute. I was actually just asking her.
Okay. Well, we did approve the proclamation.
Oh, wonderful.
And I read it out loud, and we really thank you all for all of the work that you do. And I'd also like to say, April 28, 2019, is National Blue Sunday Day of Prayer for our children all over the United States. I guess, yes, ma'am. Okay, we'll move on to item number seven, GIS Environmental Coordinator Kat Lee. It is, discuss and approve the quotation for the 2019 renewal of the NICSOL Solutions Service Agreement between Grimes County and Everbridge for reverse 911 service and authorize the county judge's signature. Ms. Lee has informed me that this item will be tabled. We're going to review another contract instead, and you'll bring it back at a future date. All right, is that okay with everyone? All right, thank you.
I do have a question for you.
Go on, on that.
I was looking at this, this is just a quote, but it, it's a three-year quote. So just based on looking at this, I don't see any way to get out if we need to. Is there an actual document that says it's a year-to-year thing in the event that we can't continue?
It's a three-year continuation, which, the reason, the, the company that we're going to meet with next week, while we're at, the judge and myself and Dave Lilly are at a conference, will have a year-to-year contract instead of a three-year contract. And this other company also has several different, I want to say, different.
Features.
Features that we can access. And they also use our data, our mapping data, instead of Google mapping data. So that's why we tabled this, so that we can meet with this, the other company next week.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, we'll move on to item number eight, Building Maintenance Manager Al Peeler. Number eight, discuss and take action to approve the auction of a 2008 Ford Expedition on GovDeals.com.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Al Peeler, Maintenance Manager. I, the last vehicle sold, we sold for $1,237. That's $600 over market value. I don't know how we did that. So I come to get rid of the other vehicle that we're replacing with the one new one. It's a 2008 Ford Explorer transmission. It was Miss Weeks, then it was.
It's an Explorer.
This is an Explorer, yeah. It was Miss Weeks, then it went to Wes Males, adult probation, and.
Elections.
Elections, that's, thank you. Elections, have been using it currently. At this time, I believe the transmission's going out of it, and every time somebody uses it, I know it has a head gasket, head gasket out of it because every time somebody uses it, I have to pull the plug and drain the water so somebody else can use it. So now that we have our vehicle, I believe it's time to let somebody else drain the water.
Is there any discussion on the matter?
So it's an Explorer?
It's an Explorer.
Is there an issue on the agenda item? Okay.
No, if you want, if you were really concerned about it, the question is a notice to the public, and if you thought somebody from the public was interested enough to be here for an Explorer versus an Expedition. There, there are times that we can put, if there, you put the wrong number, let's say you got a seven-digit number and you missed one of those numbers, it doesn't mean you have to re-calibrate that or reschedule that for another meeting. It's acceptable to move on as it is, but if you were concerned enough that somebody would have done something differently, maybe shown up, had the notice been different, then you can certainly table the item, but it's sufficient to move forward.
I move that we approve the auction of the 2008 Ford Explorer.
Second.
On GovDeals.com.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We are now up to number nine, Advertisement of Software Purchase and Movement of Charges for the Next Budget Year.
Okay, so I'm trying to move, I had planned on, I had put some money in the budget for this budget cycle for maintenance software so we could go to a work ticket system. I did several companies. The lowest quote I could get, I talked to other maintenance managers, was $12,748 a year. And I thought, well, I guess we'll just keep with the email. Road and Bridge, other departments use iWorks. I believe they sent iWorks to me. I believe Harry sent them to me. They come back at $47.50 a year. After some negotiations, I got them down to $3,000 a year, which is 1,000 less than I put in my budget for a software system. We had a date set that they were going to show us how it worked. The, the reason that I bring it to you is to advise you that I'm going to purchase this, but the money will be coming out of IT's because it's a software development out of his budget next year, or the budget cycle for next year. That's why I brought Greg in. He can tell you a little more about the software. I think it's going to provide faster service. We have, it's going to save us money on me knowing what I've changed and what I haven't. It's going to help me troubleshoot other things in the system. But I'd like you to talk, hear Greg talk about the software because he can talk to you in more technical terms than I can.
Before you go away, you're saying you have $3,000 in your current budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Which is $1,000 less than what you need.
Yes, ma'am.
But you're purchasing it this year or next year?
I'm purchasing it this year. Then next year, it will come out of the IT budget.
Okay, so currently, do you have money to move around to cover the $1,000?
Ma'am?
Do you have money to move around to cover the $1,000 that you're short?
No, I'm not short.
Okay.
I have, I had, I planned for $4,000.
Oh, you planned.
And I got it for $3,000.
Less, okay, thank you.
Yes, it's a less than.
All right, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Greg Cannon. I'm the Director of IT for Grimes County. As Al had mentioned, he had brought me in several weeks back when he was beginning to look at some of this software because he wanted a viewpoint from IT's standpoint of how the software works. He wanted to make sure I was involved in all the demo presentations so I could ask any technical questions. iWorks has been around a long time. The great thing about this product, as Harry can tell you as well, is one The great thing about this product, as Harry can tell you as well, is once you purchase this product, the contract says that's the price you pay forever. The price never raises on the products. They've got customers that bought it 20 years ago, they're still paying the price they paid 20 years ago. So, that's, that's a good advantage. It won't increase each year. It's a highly reputable program. It's all cloud-based, so we don't have to worry about providing servers or installing the software. They provide all the technical training, all the setup. It's highly customizable, which is what Alan liked about it most because we can tailor exactly the way that he needs it to function for this county. It can be highly complex or it can be very simple. It helps track costs, so at any point, the Commissioners can ask, how much did we spend on this building last year? He could pull up all the tickets, all the maintenance, everything that was done on that building. He can give you a total dollar cost instantly, you know, what was, what was spent on that building. Everything that I saw from the IT standpoint, it looks like a great product. All the questions that Al asked of the group, it seems like it'll do everything he needs and more. It seems like a very simple program to use. And like I said, it's web-based. It allows people from anywhere they're at, any employee can enter a ticket into the system that says, you know, we've got a water break in this building, we've got, you know, we're out of hand towels in the courtroom, we're out of water, et cetera. All that can be put in. He can track. I can tell you from the standpoint of the help desk that IT's put in, it's been a tremendous help to us and we're finding more and more people are using that ticketing system. So, I think it'll be a huge benefit to the maintenance department on any number of levels. So, from an IT standpoint, I fully support what maintenance is doing.
I don't believe, Greg, I could be wrong. I don't believe Greg has a problem with me purchasing this and then him picking it up. I'll just take some out of my 505 and put it in 19th year.
It was just that it was in your budget this year and you're making us aware that next year
Yes.
It will flow out of his budgets, like all software.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you both. All right. Is this not an action item? So, it was just an update. Right now, we're up to Road and Bridge Engineer Harry Walker. Item number 10. Consider and take action to allow Road and Bridge to go out for bids for construction contracts for asphalt paving and chip sealing.
Good morning, everyone. One of the items that was discussed in a recent workshop on the road and bridge projects for the year was to investigate the possibility of contracting out some of our chip sealing projects. I did follow up on that and after talking to some of our neighboring counties, found out that it looks like some of the other counties are able to get chip sealing work done by a contractor for a comparable price to what we're paying doing it in-house. So, I thought we would go ahead, just as we've discussed in the past, the chip sealing operation requires a lot of our manpower and resources be applied to those projects and leaves us deficient in other areas of our maintenance program. So, I thought we, given that it looks like the cost would be comparable, that we would go ahead and try, try to go ahead and contract some of this out this year and see how that works and use our crews to work on other items. So, I want to go out for bids on that and then at the same time, we also talked about doing some hot-mix asphalt paving on the portion of County Road 302 and Link Road. And at the same time, I want to go out for bids on those projects as well.
Sounds good.
Ask for authorization for two separate bids.
I don't have any.
I move to allow Road and Bridge to go out for bids for construction contracts for asphalt paving and chip sealing.
Same.
We have a motion to allow Road and Bridge to go out for bids for construction contracts for asphalt paving and chip sealing. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Mr. Walker, number 11 is also yours. Consider and approve the second renewal of the Special Road Use Agreement, which, help me say that word.
Juno.
Juno Oil and Gas.
I'm going to ask that you take no action on this item. Juno's project has been delayed somewhat and they were concerned that if they renewed the permit at this time, it might expire again before they were ready to go to work. So, they'll come back later when they're a bit closer to doing their will.
Okay. Thank you very much. Number 12. Discuss and consider approval of establishing a weekend crew for Road and Bridge.
This is another item that came out of the recent workshop that we had. You may recall Judge Faugh floated the idea of setting up a weekend crew during the summer months when our crews worked four 10-hour days. And his, what his thinking was that we could take advantage of having all this equipment that sits idle for three days of the week during the summer. And if we could bring in additional personnel, we could have people work that equipment Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. After some discussions with the Auditor's Office and the judge and myself, decided that hiring a weekend crew might be difficult, just finding people that were interested in working those kind of days. And particularly finding people that we were comfortable, we could send out on their own, essentially unsupervised, without creating any issues. What we came back to was that maybe a more workable solution would be to authorize a significant amount of overtime for the Road and Bridge Department to allow us to have a Friday and Saturday, 20 hours a week of overtime available to do ditch work for the same crew setup that we talked about, which would be a great oil operator, three drivers, and at least one flagger. So, after discussing, again, in-house with the Auditor's Office, the judge and myself, we decided to bring this proposal to you. If it's, if it were approved, that presented, the idea is that we would do this during the period of time of daylight savings time when the regular crews are working four-day weeks, have the overtime available to do 20 hours additional a week for that crew or for the personnel required for that crew to function, which, assuming we get this set up and started by the first weekend in May, we'd be looking at paying for 440 hours of overtime for the crew, which we worked through the cost figures. That ends up with benefits, a little over $58,000 for this cycle to from now till the end of daylight savings time, the last, well, in this case, these figures are based on the end of the budget year, since daylight savings time would be end of November. So, the $58,000 would get us to the end of this year and then if things worked out, we might include this in next year's budget. But the $58,000 on the spreadsheet I gave you is through the end of the current budget year.
September 30. Is that, September 30?
Well, the 28th is the last Saturday of the budget year. So, we cut it off there.
All right.
And I'm also asking if, if this were approved, that we would need to increase certain line items in the drainage department for fuel, prepared maintenance, and tires where we're working our equipment. This much additional, we would need to anticipate additional expenses to go along with that. That estimate through that same period comes out to a total of $29,300. And if y'all are meaningful to doing this program, we'll bring back a budget amendment for all these costs for future funding.
Now, is 491 Road and Bridge or is that drainage?
491 is the drainage crew. What our thinking is that the overtime would be available to both departments because we have people that are capable of operating the great oil and capable of driving trucks into all departments. And to make sure we, we always have the personnel available when we need them, I want to open it up to both. So, in the motion to me, that you would see these costs split between the two departments for the overtime. Because we're looking at using the drainage crew's equipment, the line item adjustments and for fuel and such would be just in their budget.
Well, if we go out for bids and find out that the contracting out some of this asphalt paving and chip sealing would free up some people as well not to have to do the overtime and we still would be able to do some of that work.
Well, and don't forget that part of what we've discussed, y'all would like for us to find ways to get more work done and more paving done.
Yeah.
Rather than contract it out and do less, we would like to do more with folks we have too. We'd like to try to do both.
Yeah.
If you recall, the road list that we looked at during the workshop, we improved new paving on about 17 miles of road in the past. The county's goal was 10 miles a year. So, we're trying to get more work done and find ways to be more efficient with it at the same time. So, yeah, I would like to do both if possible.
And our policy states that you have to have good drainage in order to pave that particular road.
And, and this proposal for the overtime is focused on drainage work. We've discussed that the highest priority would be to get better drainage and that if we could do more paving at the same time, great. But the more fundamental thing is getting the drainage. So, this is a bad drainage work primarily.
Do the auditors have anything they'd like to contribute or tell us where you think we can go with this?
Well, I mean, this would be a budget amendment.
This would be a budget amendment. Okay.
Yeah. I don't know if you would want it to be brought back up before Commissioners' Court as a budget amendment with the figures and stuff. The wording in the agenda kind of goes gearing towards the weekend crew and so it's not real clear that it's regarding overtime. I don't know if you would just bring it back before Commissioners' Court as a budget amendment and clearly stating what it's for.
Okay.
We would need to bring back a budget amendment in any case. So, if, if y'all are agreeable to the concept, then we'll move forward and bring the budget amendment back to you in the next couple of weeks.
I want to mention too that the drainage crew has been the single most important and probably the most efficient use of our, our tax money, I think, since we put that in place. Case in point, County Road 446 was paved back in 2012, I believe. No, 2011. Early 2012, we had about a two-inch rain on that road and it washed away some of the pavement in the middle of the road. Since we have done, and that's where we started with the drainage crew on that road, since we have done the drainage work on that road, to my knowledge, we haven't had any pavement washed off of that road in 46. So, it's making a huge difference in not only the paved roads, but the roads that we have base on because we're not losing the base that we have put out on these roads. And prior to this, we were losing a lot of base off these roads when we got a bit of rain because they were, it was just being washed away because we didn't have the drainage there.
Yeah. To follow up on what you said, Commissioner, I agree with you 100%. If we look at this from a sensible approach, sensible approach, the road infrastructure in Grimes County is one of the things that has the greatest impact day-to-day on the taxpayers. And we just keep spinning our wheels sometimes to, to keep the roads so that people can travel across the county. And Commissioner and I have had a discussion that if we can control some of the drainage issues in the county, that's probably going to alleviate some of the major problems. The issue is we, right now, we don't have the manpower. We're pretty spread thin in the Road and Bridge Department to do all that needs to be done. So, this is a lot of money and it's a big investment, but it's a big investment in one of our greatest assets in the county and that's our infrastructure, our, our transportation from one side of the county to the others. And I understand it's not in the, it's not in the budget as of yet, but from my seat, based on what I've seen, I believe that it's a very needed expense. So, that's my two cents on that.
I think you've done a wonderful job of bringing this back to us. We were looking for solutions to some of the issues that keep occurring over and over again. And unless we get ahead on some of the drainage issues, we're going to continue to see maintenance costs increase. And we're working very hard, you all are working very hard to try to come up with solutions. And I think it's a great, I don't know the word I'm looking for, but we were trying to implement another drainage crew and, and this basically gives us another drainage crew because those days haven't been worked for drainage. So, it puts us, puts us ahead a little bit.
Yeah. Well, again, we are trying to, to find solutions to the problems we're dealing with. There is no lack of work for the crews. And this, you know, the judge is correct that having all of our equipment sitting idle over the weekends, when you've got a three-day weekend, is not, you know, this is, this is a way to increase the efficiency of the usage of that equipment. We've already paid for the equipment. We spent some additional money on salaries for the operators. We can increase theoretically 50% more production out of the drainage crew during summer months, you know, 25% overall. It's still a major increase in our efficiency and productivity. And along with some of the other things we've talked about this morning, I think we could maybe start to get ahead of the, of the issues a little bit.
How do you, how does your crew feel about this? Are they, seem like they, it sounds like a great idea to them to have an opportunity to do overtime?
I have talked to my superintendent and the foreman and they're supportive. We did not want to broadcast it to the crew just yet.
Okay.
Because we get people excited about something and then have it maybe not come to bay. In, in general, the guys are appreciative of the opportunities they get to get overtime. Particularly a number of them that will work overtime anytime they have the opportunity. And again, with this approach where essentially everybody in the crew has an opportunity when they want, it won't be a mandatory. We're not going to say, okay, you five guys, you're working overtime during the weekend. We can make it more voluntary approach where if people, you know, they want to go on vacation, they need to make a few extra bucks to pay for the vacation or whatever, they can volunteer to work some overtime for a while. Or if they have, you know, other things, they have planned for the weekend, you know, they're not required to do that. I think it'll be well-received. We'll sit down with them, you know, if, if this is approved and go through it all and get everything lined out. But the management group is, is very supportive of it. Everybody feels like this is a more workable solution than establishing a weekend crew. We foresaw too many issues, particularly in hiring all the people we needed. And what do you do if you hire, you know, the new truck drivers, for example, and you can't find a great oil operator? You know, what do you do with those guys? That, that option, that idea was problematic. I think this is much more workable and I think it'll be well-received. And, you know, there are And, you know, there are people on the crews that aren't going to want to take any overtime, and that's fine.
And then you would have had to train, train them?
Yeah, we don't have to train everybody. We don't have to teach them the way around the county or how we do things. So there's a lot of efficiency in that approach.
So, just a couple more questions. The work that's going to be done by this crew, we hope will offset the expense of the crew by maintaining or improving the problematic areas enough that you don't have to keep going back and putting material and redoing what gets torn up through drainage issues.
The drainage, yes. We'll get additional work done. The drainage work we're doing, as Commissioner Dubianski said, helps protect these roads from damage. And if you can, you know, avoid that damage, then there's less maintenance to be done in the future. We think this will benefit, there's no lack of work to be done, there's plenty to be done. That's not going to be an issue. But we think that, again, it lets us start to get ahead of that maintenance curve, where we're not just always in reactionary mode, where we start to prevent some of the damages. And instead of spending our time and efforts on repairing things, we can do more beneficial maintenance.
So I would guess that at some point, if the court approves going forward with this, that you'll give us an assessment on what your opinion is regarding the efficiency, the effectiveness of this particular?
I will, yeah. I'd like to try it for, you know, a few weeks and then report back and let you know how things seem to be going. And then, like anything else we do, if we're trying something new, we need to evaluate, you know, how that works out. You know, like they say, the best laid plans sometimes go awry. But I'll be glad to report back to you from time to time, is how this seems to be working.
Any other questions?
I don't have any, any due support.
If there are no further questions, I move that we approve the weekend crew for Road and Bridge.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Dubianski, seconded by Commissioner Cox, to approve establishing a weekend crew for Road and Bridge.
And just to be clear, that I heard a couple of times, I just want to be clear, that it's coming back for a budget amendment.
Yes.
And also, when it comes back for a budget amendment, I'd make this point, if you're going to do a review of it after a couple of months, I mean, you may have little participation, you may have difficulty getting sufficient numbers for a full crew on a regular basis. It may be that you doesn't need all of the money, fund the entire operation through the full budget year. So I would just say, keep that in mind, but in my mind, this needs to come back for a budget amendment.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. All of those in favor?
Oh, one question.
Okay.
Does that include the other, the second page?
Yes.
For the budget, when she comes back with the budget amendment, are you asking the Attorney's Office to come back with both of those pages as the budget, as the proposed budget amendment?
Yes.
But you're approving the structure today. I understand that you're not approving the dollars.
Right.
It's approval of the concept.
Yeah. All right, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We're now up to Road and Bridge's report. But Mr. Walker, do you mind if I just acknowledge?
I will be, go ahead.
Ms. Martinez, you were not here earlier, and we did approve the proclamation that you all sent over as April, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Grimes County. And?
And Commissioner, I just say, on the agenda item, if you wanted to go back to it, if they had something to say besides just the proclamation?
Okay.
They certainly could do that.
All right.
Yeah, I would.
Would you like to come and introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Melissa Martinez, and I would just like to say, we would like to continue collaborating with Grimes County to help serve those who have been victims of sexual assault. As of 2018, we did help serve nineteen community members of Grimes County, and we'd just like just to continue to work with you guys, if you allow.
But we hope you all have as many cases to work, but we appreciate all of the work that you all do, and I did want to acknowledge your presence, that you came in. And we thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you, Mr. Walker. Now, if we could go to Road and Bridge's report.
We have been taking advantage of better term and weather here lately. We put a lot of rock out the last few weeks on a lot of different roads. We also, the drainage crew has been very busy, and the side ditcher is back in operation at full speed. So the drier conditions have helped a lot. We did get some cupboards replaced on 195, 203 Bracewell and Harrison. Part of that work had been delayed. We started up on Bracewell and Harrison a while back and had to postpone that work. So people have been curious as to why we had cupboards sitting out there and not being installed. We had some other things that came up that caused us to delay that, but that's been done now. One cupboard is a sixty-inch, a few times smaller, wider cupboard. We do have our traffic counters out, we're continuing to collect data to support the selection of roads for paving, continuing with that. We did have the tree cutters in to do a little bit of work here last week. And elsewhere, we're continuing to work with Magellan Pipeline, a lot of the issues associated with pipeline construction. We also had another meeting with Plains Pipeline to discuss the proposed Loop to Webster Pipeline, which is coming up probably in January of next year. Commissioner Cox and the judge and I had not pretended to meet with them last week after court. This is, they're telling us now that this is going to be a thirty-six-inch crude oil pipeline, that we follow the alignment of the Enterprise Pipeline that is nearing completion in the north end of the county. And they're expecting, they're starting to do land work and things. We had some people call and ask, what do you know about this pipeline with the funny name? So that's coming up. They're telling us construction probably will start in January of next year. So this can be a major project for the county also.
Can you touch just a little bit about the base stabilization test that you?
Certainly. I believe I mentioned previously, a couple weeks ago, we set up a demonstration project on County Route 446, looking at two different base stabilization techniques. One of them is using a proprietary product called Base Seal, which is an additive that you put into the base material that tightens the road up and hardens it. That worked very well. We got some logistical issues at the project, but the actual results came out very well. It makes for a very hard, firm base that, most people can look at it and say, it looks like concrete. It's, you know, it's a gray color, it has that appearance. I'm a little disappointed because of these logistical issues, we ended up finishing the road in the dark with the equipment without working lights. So the finish on the road wasn't as good as I'd hoped. But the, it's very solid. I mean, by the next morning, it was hard. I was impressed. I've seen demonstrations on a lot of proprietary products over the years, and generally they end up being disappointing. This was not disappointing. It's cost-wise, it's less expensive than what we do for chip sealing. Certainly, it's more expensive than just putting rock on the road. So it's an intermediate cost treatment that I think will give us very good longevity and durability of these roads. It is my intention to try and use this product on a couple more projects this summer, not on a demonstration basis, but we'll have to actually pay for it this time. But it's, the product is not that expensive, so I think it's got some potential. At the same time, we did another section of the road, a quarter-mile Base Seal. We did a quarter-mile adjacent to it, stabilizing with asphalt emulsion, which is a more, you know, common technique. That also worked out very well. It produces a, essentially, it looks like a black road. It doesn't quite look like asphalt, but it's a dark color, you can tell it's been treated with asphalt. This is, the asphalt emulsion gives a more flexible base that you could blade and grade and do things like that on. The Base Seal is hard, you don't have to blade it. It's not receptive to being bladed, just like you wouldn't put a blade on a concrete road. They both, they both worked out very well, running the cost numbers for the work we did and everything. The asphalt emulsion, it looks like it's probably going to be too expensive to use on a regular basis. There may be, or on a widespread basis, there may be specific locations that it might be a good solution. Both of the products worked out well, they did what they were supposed to do. Commissioner spent quite a bit of time out looking at it. So he came out to look at what we're doing. I think he made the vendors nervous, having our county attorney.
That's why I was there.
He didn't file any suits or hit anybody with restraining orders, so they were okay.
Are there any areas that actually have this product in use right now that's, how well it's aged or where we can kind of see?
There, it has been used extensively in Florida.
The proprietary one? Oh, it's in Florida. We're going to need a road trip, I guess.
What we're looking at.
Check the travel budget.
Have you gotten calls from citizens?
We got a number of comments from citizens when we were out there working and since then, that they really like it. Several people that were back and forth multiple times while we were working that seemed to really think well of it. This is, actually, the sales representative for this product actually lives here in Grimes County. He's, well, he's more than a sales representative, he's part owner of the company, bought into the company recently. So the product has not been used on a widespread basis in Texas yet. We actually were trying to make arrangements to get a county engineer from Florida in one of the counties that's used a lot to come over and consult with us on it. We weren't able to work that out, but.
But you're getting good news from them as far as it's?
Yes, they have used this product for thirty years, and they're very, very complimentary of it.
If they use it for that long, it must be pretty good.
They initially started out just using the Base Seal product as liquid, and then over the years, they changed their approach a little bit, and they, it's Base Seal product and a lime additive, you know, in recent years, and found that works even better. But they said you can use it just by itself, and it works very well even that way. They're very complimentary of it.
It probably depends basically on the base, what it adds.
You know, and now, Base Seal's intention is that you're going to use this as a base course.
And it puts something on top of it.
And a surface on it. What I want to do is leave it open, you know, at least a year or two, and see if it is a viable alternative for us to use just as is without having to pay over it. We'll see how that works. But they're, they did say, we're not sure, you know, how well they have had it.
How it's going to work actually is?
Was it in that fashion for a year or so? They said that's not really the intention. We'll see how that goes. If you drive down 446 between 47 and 48, you can't miss it.
We should potentially go ahead and add that into the product when we actually do the chip seal, potentially as well.
Yeah, that would be an approach. If you use this and then chip seal over it, I think you'd have a very durable, very long-lasting road. And that's what we're looking for, at a price we can afford.
Yeah. I could have swore that he said they, he used that in, down around Beaumont, maybe in East Texas?
There are, there are some places in Texas that have used it before, but the bulk of their installations are over.
And all of the installations have been with the surface as well, to cover it?
Not all of them. They have had other clients that left it uncovered for one reason or another, that's maybe, you know, we're going to prepare it this year, and we'll come back to pavement next year, and then that gets delayed or whatever. It wasn't necessarily a planned approach. If they have said. Yeah, it looks pretty well that way, too.
Do you have to have the Turgeon machine or some machine like that to apply?
We have equipment that can do that, not nearly as efficiency. Part of, part of the demonstration project, they also arranged to bring out a?
Workin', I said, turn it, Workin'.
Workin' is the name of the company. They brought out a reclaimer and allowed us to use it for the day, actually trained one of our operators to use it and everything, at just the cost of hauling it out here. And that's, that's an impressive piece of equipment, it's designed to go through and grind up whatever materials you have on the road and bring it into a consistent mixture. It's particularly well-suited for, like, old asphalt roads where you've got years and years of hot hole patching, overlays and things that happen, you get sort of a very non-uniform material. You grind it up and turn it essentially back into base material that is uniform, and is your much better starting point for your construction. So that was part of the demonstration, too. It's a fancy machine, pretty neat.
Yeah, I mean, I can comment.
Probably even operate it.
But well.
Commissioner Cox got in. It's creating liability that I saw.
Yeah, that is correct. The machine that they brought out was the smaller version, and the price tag on it, I'm sure it would be negotiable, but was about $450,000. And I asked the guy, could I drive it? He just kind of giggled a little bit, he didn't answer me back, but it was a pretty impressive piece of equipment.
But the answer to that question is, we've got the equipment to do, we don't need the Workin'.
We can do it. We have a piece of equipment that performs the same function. It's much simpler, not as sophisticated, it doesn't have the injection system, so you put the product right into the mixing box. What we're looking at for some of these upcoming projects is renting a piece of equipment like that for a week, for a couple of weeks. We get up, a little hard to get over the $450,000. If money were no object, I'd love to have one, but I think renting one once in a while might be a better approach.
Well, thank you, Mr. Walker, for your report. We'll move on to item number thirteen, considering take action regarding the burn ban in authorized county judges' signatory. We don't have Mr. Lilly here this morning. Anybody have any?
We have rain in Port Cass.
Again. Okay, I don't, I don't think we need to take action. Is that what I'm hearing? No action?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We're on to item number fourteen, receive any updates on the strategic plan. Any updates?
If I may?
Yes, sir.
Maybe should have been brought up in the public announcements, but I think it fits in the strategic plan. into the strategic plan also. Judge Fowth provided me with a press release related to the 249 project.
Thank you.
I won't read the whole thing because it's an entire page, but TechStop has agreed to make changes that we were requesting to the 249 project that will include adding overpasses at 1774, at 304, and 1748, which were not included in the original project. And they're also going to add passing lanes periodically along the alignment, similar to what we have on Highway 30, where it's what they refer to as a super tube configuration, basically a two-lane road with a passing lane every few miles.
Like 105.
Similar to what they've done recently on 105. Again, this, the, the press release came from Representative Lamond's office. I'm going to read a portion of it. He says, "I thank TechStop, Judge Fowth, and all of the county commissioners of Grimes County for their hard work and collaboration with me on this effort to ensure overpasses and passing lanes are implemented into the design of this H249 within Grimes County. If it was not for the collaborative effort of all elected officials and citizens, these needed revisions to address the safety concerns, the safety concerns would not have occurred. These improvements, combined with the removal of the toll, ensures that this project is safe for our citizens and provides a benefit to the region by addressing our future overall transportation needs." And Judge Fowth added, "A special thanks both to Representative Lamond and TechStop engineer Lance Simmons for their steadfast work to ensure the divisions to State Highway 49 were made possible. Without the collective effort of everyone involved, including the entire community, these major updates never would have happened. I'm happy that the improvements are being put in place to address the safety concerns that are being, are being implemented, and that Grimes County will benefit from replacement of the overpasses and passing lanes as we continue to grow." I would also add to that list, a special thanks to Chad Boni with TechStop. He has worked particularly hard in pushing the idea of these changes to the project within TechStop. And I think his support was crucial in achieving this result. Quite frankly, I believe that these changes will save lives in this project. There were some legitimate safety concerns. These changes were a long, long ways to address, so I'm very excited to hear this announcement.
So am I. I, I want to say it a, a little bit louder for our world out there to hear. We now have overpasses being approved for County Road 306, 307, State Highway 105, FM 1774, County Road 304, and FM 1748. And addition of passing lanes for both eastbound and westbound travel lanes. This will be in this week's newspaper, is that correct? It's in today's paper. For anyone that wants to read it in its entirety, and I want to thank all of those that worked so tirelessly to get that done. It does make it a safer project, which is the reason why we voted for it, is for the safety of the citizens and everyone involved. So, we want to thank everybody. A special thanks to you two, Mr. Dobianski, for working so hard also.
I want to comment. A meeting that we had in Abasota back in, sometimes in the fall of last year with Williams Brothers who was constructing the project, TechStop said that they were expanding 1774 to three lanes up to 249, and we're going to put a light there. And the whole purpose of this meeting was safety. And my comment to them at the end of the meeting, I said, and they stressed that this would be used as a hurricane evacuation route. And I asked them at the end of that meeting, I said, what do you all think is going to happen when you have 1774 coming into 249 with a red light there as a hurricane evacuation event? It's going to be chaos, just like it was back in, when we had Hurricane Harvey and some of the other hurricanes in, in Grimes County and, and Washington County, when we had traffic backed up, we had people stranded on the roads because they couldn't get through. And I think that kind of got their attention, and they start really, that's when I think it really started dawning on them that they needed an overpass at that intersection, and it kind of snowballed to get this moving to the, to the point that we're on today. Again, we thank all the people who came out, the citizens from Plantersville, the elected officials in Plantersville were very vocal in this, and, and all the citizens were able to get this moved and get it, get it done.
Once again, a big thank you to Texas Department of Transportation. We are now up to, if we don't have any?
I have, I have.
You have any more?
Yeah, I have. Grimes County Animal Rescue met with Shelter Planters of America, the board did Saturday, April the sixth, to go over the needs assessment that they provided for us on the facility that we're looking at, at the, over at the law enforcement center. Within six to eight weeks, we will have a conceptual design, and at that time, we will be coming back to Commissioners' Court with a report on that. So, we're moving forward with that project.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cox?
Yes, so the, the discussion we had earlier about the road situation, that does fall into a couple of the strategic plan items, and we are moving forward, is another example. What's the strategic plan, some of the items listed on there?
Thank you all for the updates, and at this time, we'll move on to item number fifteen.
Move to adjourn, second.
All right. We have a motion to move to adjourn by Commissioner Mallon and seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.